Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Shane Hall is the pastor at First Southern Baptist Church. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greenwell if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand at this time?
Let's pray together. Father, we come to you today. We thank you for the beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you for the privilege of living in this great city. And we thank you for the men and women that are here today to, Lord, just to put their minds together and figure out ways to make this city even better today than it was yesterday. So I ask that you would provide them wisdom, give them insight and direction that comes from you. And we thank you for their service to the people here. Bless this time, Saint Jesus, and we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Each month, we recognize one teacher in the metro area as our Teacher of the Month. And today's teacher is Tammy King. She comes to us from the Moore Public Schools system. We want to thank the Rotary Club of Oklahoma for allowing us to help honor Tammy. I'm going to ask her to come up. Let's show our appreciation to our Teacher of the Month. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Tammy Michelle King has been named Teacher of the Month for April 2016 by Moore Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Tammy grew up in Oklahoma City and graduated from US Grant High School, Tammy earned her Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education as well as a Master's of Education degree in both guidance and counseling and educational leadership and administration from the University of Central Oklahoma in Edmond. Whereas Tammy has taught at Fisher Elementary School in the Moore Public Schools District for 15 years, spending the past 13 years teaching 5th grade. Whereas Tammy is a professional development chairman for her school and is an active member of Fisher's PTA. She serves on the MPS District Math Curriculum and Calendar Committees and is part of the district STEM team. Whereas Tammy has served as a presenter for various district events, including new teacher orientation, math workshops, and the local association professional development day. Tammy has been a great expectations education foundation instructor for over a decade and spends her summers teaching the GE methodology to educators from around the country. Whereas Tammy is a member of the Oklahoma Education Association as well as the National Education Association, and she is currently serving on Superintendent Joy Hofmeister's Teacher Advisory Council. Whereas Tammy was honored to be chosen by her side as Fisher Teacher of the Year for 2015-16, and she is a finalist for the Moore Public Schools District Teacher of the Year. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Tammy Michelle King on her selection as the April 2016 Teacher of the Month by Moore Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Now, the city council has to vote on this to make it official. So we'll see if we can get a motion in a second. All right, cast your votes. It's unanimous. Now you can appreciate, show your appreciation again.
Thank you so, so much. And thank you to the Oklahoma City City Council. As a US Grant graduate, sorry, guys. I consider Oklahoma City my hometown, and I am just so honored that you would recognize teachers in this manner, especially in today's atmosphere where it's so important to look at the positive things going on. So thank you so, so much. And thank you to Dr. Romains, my superintendent, for being here with me. Thank you, sir.
Let's show our appreciation one more time. And it is also Dispatcher Appreciation Week. And we have Jamie O'Leary, Heather Dornan, Chris Bevel, Brittany Speck, Josh Miller. Y'all want to come forward and stand up here? These are your people that might answer the phone when you call 911 and get help along the way. And we have an opportunity here this morning to draw attention to their fine work. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. When an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers and firefighters are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Oklahoma City Emergency Communications Center. Whereas public safety dispatchers and call-takers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas by monitoring police, by radio, public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for the officers. Critical information is provided to the officers in the field, and this helps to ensure their safety. Public safety dispatchers and call-takers of the Oklahoma City Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Whereas each public safety dispatcher and call-taker has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the last year. Public safety dispatchers and call-takers are at their best helping others through the worst situations imaginable. Whereas public safety dispatchers and call-takers save lives and change lives, one call at a time. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim April 10th through 15th as National Telecommunicator Week in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation to our 911 staff.
We're very proud to be public servants, and this group of individuals is representative of the amazing employees that we have at 911. But I would remiss if I did not acknowledge some of the other people that contribute to what we do. We want to thank our city leadership, our executive leadership, the men and women of the police department, as well as our city's leadership, because without you, we just couldn't do the job that we do. So thank you for allowing us to be here.
Well, and it's, you know, it's something we take for granted in Oklahoma City. If you call 911, someone's going to answer the phone and get you some help. And these are kind of the faces behind that service. And can you imagine doing this on a daily basis, taking one emergency call after another, all day long, all day long, and then coming back to work the next day and again, trying to be prepared? What type of training goes into preparing these people for this service?
It's been four weeks in a classroom environment and then several months, up to eight, 10, 12 months, and they are on the job training. And we have currently 14 or 14 CPOs, communication training officers that they use much of their energy. So the point of that was, in some cases, nearly a year, just training these people to be able to handle a wide variety of calls that come into our conference room center. So we appreciate your work very, very much, not just the week, but that will be basically coming here. And just appreciate you, just thank you all very much.
It is also National Poetry Month. And Trina Lee is here, wants to get to remind us of the wonders of poetry. I'll ask her to read it.
Whereas the Academy of American Poets established the month of April as National Poetry Month in 1996. Whereas National Poetry Month seeks to highlight the extraordinary legacy and ongoing achievement of American poets, introduce Americans to the pleasures and benefits of reading poetry, bring poets and poetry to the public in immediate and innovative ways, and make poetry an important part of our children's education. Whereas National Poetry Month, under the leadership and direction of the Academy of American Poets, is now the largest literacy celebration in the world. Poetry enhances and enriches the lives of all Americans. Whereas poetry is an essential part of our arts and humanities, affects every aspect of life in America today, including education, the economy, and community pride and development. Whereas poetry has produced some of the nation's leading creative artists and has inspired other artists in fields such as music, theater, film, dance, and the visual arts. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of April National Poetry Month in Oklahoma City, and he urges all citizens to recognize and celebrate the important role of poetry in creating and sustaining this great nation with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs.
Let's show our support for National Poetry Month. And I'll present you with that. And now, who doesn't have a favorite poem? And I challenge everyone to expand their poetry knowledge this month. Pick out one poem and read it and memorize it if you can. If you can, and share it with others. Thank you so much for drawing their attention to poetry. Let's see, if I can remember what else we've got to do this morning. The Douglas Trojan basketball team has now won the state championship six of the past seven years. Let's come on up, guys. Bring your coaches with you. Coach Kendall Cujo, doing it one more time with his staff. And we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it. We'll get settled up here.
Whereas Douglas High School beat Fort Gibson 57 to 45 to claim the Class 4A State Basketball Championship. Whereas Coach Kendall Cujo guided the 2015 to 16 Trojans to its sixth state title in seven years. The Trojans ended the season with a record of 27 to 3. Whereas Patrick McComman was named the Oklahomans Class 4A Tournament Most Valuable Player. Whereas McCoffin and Corion Mason were named to the Oklahomans 4A All-Tournament Team. Whereas Douglas reached a championship game by defeating Ada 61 to 50 and Victory Christian 60 to 41. Whereas the coaches and young men of the Douglas High School basketball team have represented Oklahoma City with honor through hard work, big dreams, and perseverance. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby congratulate Douglas High School on winning the Class 4A State Basketball Championship.
Let's show our appreciation of these young men's hard work. And I want to talk to Coach Cujo in a moment, but we actually need a motion in a second. We'll have to vote on this. So the guy from the Millwood graduates makes the motion on the item. That should be noted in the record. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It's unanimous. Now you can show your appreciation and acknowledgement of the Douglas High School team. And Coach, congratulations. Thank you for representing Oklahoma City so well on the statewide stage.
We appreciate it. I'd like to recognize my coaching staff and my managers. Where's my manager? There they are. My two young ladies there. And just a great group of kids that put in a lot of time and hard work in the offseason to get to this point.
Give us an example of what's going on offseason. What type of work do you expect these young men to perform?
Well, you probably need to ask my strength and conditioning coach here. But just a lot of strength training, a lot of running, conditioning, because that's what we did. Once we got to the regular season, we just, we used our defense and conditioning to wear our opponents down, and it made our offense come easy.
Well, you also schedule a tough list of teams. You don't try to run away from tough competition. I think that probably helped you in the tournament. Well, congratulations. I can tell also, you have, you've found some height in the halls of Douglas High School this year. Congratulations. We're really proud of you, and thanks for your work. And those of you who are coming back next year, we wish you good luck and hope you have a chance to repeat that championship. All right, let's show our thanks and appreciation again. There you go, Coach. We're happy. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. For A is to receive the journal for April 5th, and for B is to approve the journal for March 29th. Are there any comments or questions on the journal? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five is request for uncontested continuance.
None this morning.
All right, anyone from council want to make a request on an uncontested continuance? Then we'll move on to item six. It's a list of revocable permits. The first is a request from the historic Film Row Film Exchange District to hold an event called "The Exchange." And it looks like Julie and Douglas are here. Come on forward. Okay. Julie's all alone. Julie, we'll need your name and address for the record.
Julie Oslin, 609 West Sheridan, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
All right, tell us about "The Exchange."
Well, it's actually formerly premiered at Film Row. We're rebranding this year, restarting, and we have two of our board of directors here today as well. And we close the street from Dewey to Chertel, and we are going to have street vendors in the street, not your regular candle makers. We actually have some unique vendors that are doing some eclectic, "Made in Oklahoma" type things, a special kids' area, music. So it's just, it's going to be different and fun, and I hope you guys all come.
Reading my notes here, so it's the third Friday of each month.
Third Friday of every month.
Starting next month in May.
Next month in May. Yeah, we got started a little bit late because of the rebranding and re, you know, changing things up. So typically, next year, I'll be here for an April apartment, April through October. So this year, we're going to go May through October. We wanted to make sure we had our ducks in a row.
Well, lots of exciting things happening in Film Row. And congratulations on that, and thank you for drawing attention to all the positive things happening in the western part of downtown.
Thank you.
How about a motion from Ward 6, Representative Meg Salyer?
Thank you so much for the rebranding. It really is going to be exciting, I think.
It really is.
You've got a bunch of new sponsors. I've done a lot of podding, has always done it, but 21C is going to be involved in the event. So it's going to be very exciting.
It's going to be great.
Thanks.
You guys will all be there, right?
Yeah, I imagine so. How about a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, good luck, Julie. All right, our second is item 6B, and this is a request with Oklahoma Family Center for Autism to hold the Autism Oklahoma Peace Walk and 5K. And Crystal, are you here? Crystal Frost? Crystal, we'll need your name and address just for the record. Thank you.
Crystal Frost, 13919 North May Avenue.
All right, and tell us about "The Peace Walk."
Okay, "The Peace Walk" is an autism celebration. April is Autism Awareness Month, so we always finish Autism Awareness Month on the first Saturday in May at the Bricktown Ballpark. This is our ninth year to do it. We have about 8,000 people and about 800 runners that come out. It's an amazing day for everybody to kind of finish Autism Awareness Month. We have bounce houses and face painting and Disney characters, and we have a resource fair for all of the parents and everything. And so it's kind of our day just to celebrate and not worry about having to have a meltdown or anything like that. And so we block off the streets for a one-mile walk, and then we have a 5K run as well. The walk is free, and the 5K is $35. And it's always the first Saturday in May, which this year is May 7th.
You're spelling "peace walk," P-I-E-C-E. Does that symbolize something?
Yes, the puzzle piece, like this little guy on my shirt, Dash, is a puzzle piece. You know, autism is, they don't know what causes autism, so it's a puzzle piece for the national thing. And then we just take it a little bit further. Dash is actually Emotion, and he's a character that you can actually tweet with and, you know, Facebook with, and he's just very safe for a lot of our kids with autism.
All right, well, this event will be May 7th in Ward 7. John?
Can I explain Oklahoma?
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. All right, and item 6C is a request with the Oklahoma Mustang Club to hold National Mustang Day, April 17th. This would be in Automobile Alley. And Alan King and Bill James are both here. You guys can come forward and tell us about this event.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. It's Bill James, 9209 Forest Cove, Midwest City, Oklahoma.
Hey, you're forgiven.
Thank you.
Not really.
This is very time. Well, the National Mustang Day is a day that is celebrated worldwide because that's the day that the Ford Mustang rode off the assembly line. And so our club, the Oklahoma Mustang Club, decided that it would be a great idea to hold a special event in Automobile Alley. So we have asked the city to allow us to block off the area from 9th to 6th, and we hope to have at least 300-plus Mustangs. We'll have a couple vendors there. We're going to sell some T-shirts. And it's just going to be a really festive event, just celebrating the Mustang car. It'll be a destination point for those people in the city that have cars. It's just not for our club. We've invited anyone that owns a Mustang to come to Automobile Alley.
And this is Saturday?
This is Sunday.
Sunday, this Sunday.
Hopefully, the weather holds out.
All right. Sure it will. Meg, you want to make a motion here?
Absolutely. This is exactly what Automobile Alley's for, so we're really excited to host you. Thanks for coming down. I'd make a motion to approve.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thanks.
Thank you, council.
And item D is a request, let's see, for the Oklahoma City Memorial Marathon. Jordan Ward? Jordan, come on up. Jordan Wood, I'm sorry. And we'll need your name and address, though, for the record, Jordan.
Personal address?
Business address, probably, would be fine.
620 North Harvey.
Okay. Tell us about the memorial run this year.
Okay, well, my name is Jordan Wood, and I'm the marathon coordinator for the Oklahoma City Memorial Marathon. We're really excited for our 16th annual race this year. Some things that you guys will see differently this year is we're really making it our first priority to get all communities involved in the race. We've launched a neighborhood campaign this year featuring neighborhoods along the course that are wearing our mission statement on shirts that people can purchase that go back to the memorial, and we're hoping to paint our course with different historic districts just to show out-of-state people who are about. We also have had a neighborhood luncheon featuring all the neighborhoods along the course. Meg Salyer attended and spoke, and we are very grateful for you being there. We also had a church luncheon this year featuring churches along the course, trying to plan accordingly and work with them and get them involved. We have a new church that's on board this year that's actually going to be course-marshaling our race. So we're really trying to reach all avenues and get everyone, fit them in where they can be a part of this event this year. We've also sent out a significant amount of postcards this year promoting this campaign and trying to get new communities involved in the race. And so we're very excited, and thank you for having me.
How many racers do you expect this year, or entrants, in the entire field?
How many?
How many people do you think will be in the race this year?
We have reached, passed the 21,000 mark this year, and we've increased our kids' race to 3,500, and that's almost sold out. So we're really trying to grow that next generation of runners and continue to teach the story to them.
Okay, and what time will it start?
6:30 a.m. Our wheelchair start is 6:25 a.m.
All right, and that's not this Sunday, but the following Sunday?
Yes.
All right.
April 24th.
Thanks and good luck.
Thank you.
All right, still not too late for the council to go sign up to run the Memorial Marathon?
It's a little too late for us to start practicing, I think.
Yeah, it might be too late to start training, but not too late to sign up. All right, well, they have shorter races, though. You could probably get through it without training. Of course, the 5K. How about a motion?
So moved.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks and good luck.
Thank you, Jordan.
Yeah, and good luck getting a hotel room that weekend. I mean, it has become one of the top tourism events that we have, 21,000 people and a significant number of them coming in from out of town.
You know, I really do want to compliment the memorial for how much work they've done with the neighborhoods. You don't always notice that it's so impactful, but a year ago, when we had the weather incident and the race didn't start until two hours after its original start, so many people were impacted. Churches, people were in church and couldn't get out, people couldn't get to church, you know, neighbors couldn't get to breakfast, and it really kind of elevated the conversation about how important it was to engage everybody. So they've, staff has come up with some great ideas, from the T-shirts to, you know, it really has been wonderful, their engagement.
Well, it's great when the neighborhoods embrace the race because then they can actually come out and cheer the runners on as they go by. And some people even hold events and parties, you know, in celebration of it.
I think they took Boston as part of a model where every single neighborhood, you know, comes out in full force and cheers the runners on, as you said, gives support to everybody. And so they're really kind of adopting a new approach, and it's been great.
It is. I look forward to it every year. So it's a week from Sunday, the Oklahoma City Memorial Marathon. All right, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Looks like there are three items on the MFA. Was there a motion?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Just two items today.
Leave the items.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the PPA. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items.
Leave the items.
All right, cast your votes on the EAT. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
The opposite of the convention.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any individual considerations?
Mayor, we do have presentations scheduled for items Y1 and 2.
All right.
Mayor, I was just going to mention 7K.
Okay, all right. Larry? W? All right, why don't we go ahead with those presentations on Y1 and 2?
Good morning, everyone. David Wanzner, 718 West Sheridan, Oklahoma City. I am here to talk about two projects that we have requested TIFF funding for in the downtown area. First is Sunshine Cleaners, located at 1,001 Northwest First Street. So it's the intersection Northwest First and Klassen. So most people have driven by this building for decades, and it's been most notable for two things, an incredible old neon sign and a building that doesn't have a roof on it with trees growing inside. So it's set empty and desolate for about two or three decades. It has had, literally had homeless encampments in the building. I do believe the city at one time actually went and had to put the metal panels up on the windows to secure the building. So it's been a strain on city services. It's been a strain on the neighborhood for several decades, and you can see some photos there of the inside before we purchased it. So, you know, to our knowledge, this is the first development that has jumped west of Klassen Boulevard that's in the TIFF district. So, you know, the TIFF district does go over to Western, but this is the first one that's jumped Klassen. So we're excited to continue the ongoing renaissance that's happening in the west side of downtown. So as you can see, full-grown tree, full-sized trees growing inside of this building. But the building itself is just incredible, incredible details. We are, we face unusual challenges with this building because of the trees that's caused the slab to heat quite a bit, so we're having to take out an entire slab and put in a new slab. The building lacks ADA access, as you can see in that picture on the left, so we are having to do some new work there that will force us to move that fire hydrant and some water mains and some inlets that adds to some of this expense on this building. And then almost every single lintel above the window has buckled again just due to the neglect. I mean, this building is just set with, neglected. It could very easily have been torn down at some point if someone wanted to do that. But we want to save this building. We did list it on the National Register of Historic Places, so it will be a tax credit project. And it will be a full gut rehab of this building. Not much to gut, actually. We have four walls and barely a foundation, but we don't have to demo the roof. It was already demoed for us, so. But it is all new windows, new storefront, new entry canopy, restoring that beautiful sign, resurfacing a parking lot. It'll be basically a brand-new building with those four historic walls. And it'll be a mixed-use building, so there'll be manufacturing in it to the tune of a new craft brewery. It'll be office space, and then a restaurant in this building, 17,000 square feet. So it'll be a nice mixed-use building that is directly catty-cornered to the 21C Hotel. So our total cost for this project is right at just under 3.7 million. We have asked for $550,000 in TIFF, and this also is a historic tax credit project that we are using some tax credits on. Core shell work is scheduled to be finished fourth quarter of this year. And back last of rendering is a page is a rendering of what the building will look like hopefully come this September. So Lingo Construction is our general contractor, and Gardner Architects are architects. We've got a great team in place that is well-versed in these type of projects. We've got a great team in place that is well-versed in these type of projects.
When was this building constructed?
It was in the 30s, yeah, in the 1930s. And it was, as far as we can tell, it was a regional, or sorry, a citywide distribution for a laundry facility that did laundry and dry cleaning, it had a drive-through window, and they serviced other facilities around the city, so.
And tell us about the sign.
So, you know, the sign is kind of, I know, I've driven past it for decades, decades, right? Everybody, that's what most people know about this building, is they recognize that Sunshine Cleaner sign. So, it is a really great neon sign, that really great logo of the sun at the top of it, so we'll be doing a restoration on this. It'll be new neon on both sides, so it's a double-faced, double-faced sign. So, it's a pretty significant neon sign that'll really add to some of these other neon signs that we have in Auto Valley, our Tower Theater, and some of these great neon signs around town.
Yeah. It's a great project, David.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking this on.
Appreciate it.
Comments or questions from council? All right, appreciate the update.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you so much. Second project that I'm here to talk about is the Townhouse, formerly known as the Townhouse Hotel. This is a property that is located at Fifth and Lee, just on the southern boundary of Midtown. So, it has, it's one of a handful of these 1930s apartment buildings that were built and very common throughout the city. There's a handful of them left in the downtown core. It's a four-story building that is, was set up as 44 single rooms with bathrooms. And for the last few decades, it's been frankly a flop house. And it has definitely been a strain on city services and a strain on this neighborhood. We owned it and operated, we had it for about a year as we got our plans together and kept it running as it was, but police were called here weekly, and usually multiple times a week. There's been drug overdoses, there's even been deaths in the Townhouse. You know, it did have some people that were trying to get up and back on their feet as well, but it had been a challenge to this neighborhood for quite a while. We had to clear it, actually, of some people who had broken in a few months ago, and I met a police officer over there, and he, literally, he thanked us. He's like, "Thank you for closing this." He's like, "I had to come in over and see so many bad things over here and come over here on a weekly basis." So, we are turning this into 17 apartments, so it's got this great historic shell. Again, it was built in the 1930s, so it'll be 17 apartments, mostly one-bedroom, a couple of two-bedroom apartments. It's a full gut rehab, again, so it's also on the national, well, we listed on the National Register of Historic Places, so it's also a tax credit project. So, new windows, full gut rehab inside. It's the same team, Gardner Architects and Lingo Construction. And so, it's interesting, we've had a couple of unforeseen challenges on this building. You would think that the structure in this building would have been running the short direct distance between east-west. It's actually, every wall in there is essentially load-bearing. There's a short run in between the rooms, totally unexpected. None of us can figure out why they framed it this way when they built it, but it's caused us some unnecessary or unforeseen expense challenges. We are asking for $350,000 in TIFF for this project. It's a $3.4 million rehab. We are using tax credits, and we're actually using the Mura Revolving Fund for this as well, which has been a huge help to this project, making it financially feasible. So, we appreciate that assistance, as well as the TIFF on this project. The last page is the rendering. So, we're slated to start work this summer and be completed in first quarter of 2017. And again, we'll be bringing 17 market-rate apartments to the urban core.
Comments or questions for David?
Are you using historic tax credits in either of both of them?
We are, yes, on both of these, councilman, yes.
Would you be able to build either one of them without the historic tax credits?
No. No, we would not have tackled either of these projects without the ability to tap into historic tax credits.
Well, hopefully, the state legislature will listen to this presentation today and not do away with something as vital to historic development as historic tax credits are. And this is, this is a perfect example of two buildings that would just be, continue to fall into further ruin until they were demolished, that are going to be saved, are going to be really important to the development of that part of downtown that historic tax credits make possible.
That's absolutely correct. These projects don't happen without historic tax credits, and so they add money back into the state coffers, so, without a doubt. Thank you.
I'd like to add my voice to Pete's in this regard. It's incredibly important for these projects, and these, and a couple of others that are on the drawing board or have been announced, that just can't happen without the ability to use that. So, thank you for taking these on. Main Street Arcade, if anybody hasn't seen it, is looking so fabulous, David.
Thank you.
West downtown is just booming.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for your attention.
Just to comment on that, too, I had somebody reviewing our pro forma, and he's like, "Well, you're spending more money than the building appraises for." I was like, "Yes, we are," and the gap comes from the historic tax credits and TIFF, too. It helps make that possible. And a light bulb went off over his head, and he's like, "Oh, I get it now, okay." That money's not just going into your pocket, it's actually bridging the gap to make these projects feasible.
Ed?
Can you walk through the process? Say, say somebody else is interested in trying to do one of these projects. How do you, how do you apply for TIFF? How do you negotiate the amount of TIFF? Who do you, who do you reach out to?
So, my first call is to Brent Bryant, to discuss the project with him, and sit down and talk about our pro forma, explain what we're trying to accomplish with the building, and sit down and try to show the need for our gap and what it's going to cost us to rehab this building and what money we have available through traditional financing, just due to the pro forma. So, that's my first step, is sitting down with Brent and understanding, coming to an agreement of what seems appropriate for that building, and then moving forward through the TIFF committee process, and then up to city council process.
So, you negotiate the amount with Brent, and then, once you come to an agreement, then it goes to the TIFF committee? Where does the, where does the TIFF committee meet?
So, the, I just went to a meeting at the new parking garage. So, prior to that, I believe they met in this building.
Historically, they've met in the state clerk's office. They met in the new, in the parking garage.
In the new, our district parking garage.
The last TIFF review committee.
Is it recorded? Is it, is there, are there minutes of the meeting?
There are minutes of the meeting.
We don't tape-record the proceedings of the meeting, but it is a public meeting. It's posted, there's an agenda, we take minutes.
Almost always press.
Always press, yeah. Some presser there. You know, there are other steps in the process, is that there is an internal staff committee that also meets and reviews the project. You know, Brent or Brenton and I will talk to a developer initially, and then it will go to this internal, what's called the TIFF Advisory Panel. It's a part of the, it was established as a part of a policy that the city council adopted related to TIFF, too.
Then they sell to me at some point.
And then, we go to the city manager, and we say, "Here's our recommendation. Do you agree or not agree?" And sometimes, he'll not agree. Then, we inform the developer of what our recommendation is. It then goes to the TIFF Review Committee, who makes a recommendation to the city council. And the key word there is "recommendation."
So, that's, that's the process if you agree, if you come to an agreement. What happens if you say no to David? I mean, is there, I mean, first, he meets with Brent, and they come to an agreement, then all these other things start taking place. What if Brent says no, or they can't, or they don't, doesn't match up?
And I will say, I don't think it's ever just Brent that says no. It goes through the TIFF Advisory Panel, it goes to the city manager, and then we say no. You know, well, some people do bring us some pretty crazy ideas, and we say no pretty early on because they just don't make any sense. I mean, it's just the reality of this business, you know? It's not, it's not a commentary on anybody or anything, it's just the realities of doing development work, but...
No's been said several times. I mean, to the jump out at me are the Metropolitan and the Frank, we're both, we both say that, too.
So, is there, is there, are those recorded? When you, when you say no, when we think that it's outlandish and we don't want to do it, is there a recording of that?
Not if we go through a public, the first phase, if we come in and point out some issues early on why we don't think it's going to work, we go through pro forma, and we say this, because of this and this. Generally, there isn't any...
No, I'm saying, if somebody comes to Brent or Kathy initially, and you think that it's outlandish and it's not realistic, and you say no, is there a recording of that? I mean, could somebody see?
No, no, there's not.
Okay.
No, I mean, I might have received a phone call, I probably did receive a phone call last week from somebody wanting TIFF for a limited-service hotel in downtown, in the downtown TIFF district. I said, "No, we don't do that." And they said, "Okay, I just wanted to find out." That's not recorded anywhere, but that, that in a way is a TIFF request, but we don't, we typically not provided TIFF for limited-service hotels. So, those kinds of things happen.
Just as a matter, why don't we, why couldn't we consider it for a limited-access hotel or a limited service?
Because they don't need it.
They don't need TIFF?
No. The banks are financing them right and left.
There's 10 of them that have been done without TIFF, so why would we?
Yeah, why would we start now? But, you know, I think on the Metropolitan is another example, the developer came to us, he told us what his intentions were, that he was going to flip the building, and we have a no-flipping policy in our, you know, kind of the policy that's been set by the TIFF Review Committee and the council. And he said, "Oh, well, if that's the way it's going to be, then I won't even, I won't even ask for it." And so, things like that happen, too.
Would we ever not do a hotel because it would compete with a Convention Center hotel?
No, we don't do it because they don't need the money. They can get financing.
Okay. So, here, the numbers are 15% and 10%, I think. How do you, how do you arrive, or, I mean, how does that, how did you negotiate that out?
These, a couple of these projects, and Brent, I don't know if you want to comment as well, a couple, these two projects in particular received a little more TIFF than, say, the Main Street Arcade project, and frankly, it was because these projects just had a larger gap. We had, we had challenges with these projects, again, just because of the neglect these buildings, both these buildings had undergone and the structural modifications we needed to make. There was just a gap in here that we desperately needed some additional funding to help bridge that gap and make this project happen.
So, Brent, usually, we're at 6%, 7%, 8%. So, here, we're at 10% to 15%. So, how do you decide? Is there a formula? Is there something written down that we can?
Typically, what, on these projects, it was just, you know, what, $3.7 million project, he can only get financing for a certain amount. Tax credits only bring in a certain amount. He looks to TIFF to help fill the gap. And typically, on these two projects, typically, then we look at what's the increase in taxes that they'll generate over the remaining years of the TIFF? How much will it cover? And in this case, they needed more than that to cover, to make these happen. If we provided only the amount of increment they would provide as a result of the investment, they would have gotten less. But, if they got, if they would have gotten less, they wouldn't have enough money to do the project. I mean, the returns are not that great for them on these projects, even with these high, the higher TIFF amount percentages that we're used to. But, the committee, the review committee felt like it was the thing to do to help make these projects work.
When you combine the historic tax credits and the TIFF, what, what kind of return are we shooting for here?
There, I don't have it right here in front of me, but there's 6%, 7%, 8% returns on their cash.
Single digits.
They're single digits. I mean, we try to, when we look at projects, we don't like bringing projects to you where people are making 10%, 15%, 20%. People do ask for TIFF sometimes, and when we look at it and we say, "You're making 15% return if we give you this TIFF request," we're like, "There's no way we're going to recommend that." So, so we come back and lower the TIFF amount and say, "Can you do the project at an 8% return?" You gotta remember, and then we try to do everything we can to true up the assumptions. That's why we like to talk to their bankers, we like to talk, you know, the best data that we can get to evaluate it at the time. And we know that it's going to, it's not perfect, but it's, it's subject to change, you know, as the market conditions change. But, we believe when we bring stuff to you that we've done our due diligence, and we, the best data that we have at the time, we use that for recommendations.
But, who's "we"? Who's going through the assumptions? Who's talking to the bank? Who's...
Myself. The TIFF Advisory Committee is made up of myself, Kathy, representatives from the Public Works Department, representatives from the Planning Department, additional staff that Kathy CFO was involved. So, there's, there's a group of us that evaluate these projects, looking at the, you know, the planners look at it from a planning perspective. My background being in finance, I look at it from the financing perspective. And myself, along with Jerry and Kathy Schop, drill down on all of that and try to validate all their assumptions. And so, that's how that works. And I do want to make one thing clear, he doesn't necessarily negotiate with me initially. We just try to look, is the project a viable project that is, is one that we believe that you, as a council, would want to help and participate in?
So, who does he negotiate with?
At the end of the day, he makes his pitch to the TIFF Advisory Panel, and then, from there, he makes the ask, and then the panel makes the recommendation to the city manager, and he either says yes, no, or we modify it.
Do we record the MAPS committee? I mean, like, the advisory committee meeting? I mean, all the meetings that are here in the horseshoe are recorded?
Here, the MAPS advisory committees, the subcommittee meetings are...
Are not.
I don't, they may be audio-recorded, I'm not sure.
Would there be a downside to recording it, since we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars of, that are being negotiated at this TIFF committee?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, David, thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one comment.
Uh-huh.
David Wanzner has really filled a niche that's really important downtown Oklahoma City. For him to come in and take the type of projects that he has, that have been vacant for decades, and come in and have an area that's really a drain on downtown, and it's just not that building, it's the area around it that does the development. And he takes a really a negative area and makes it into a reinvestment positive area. And very, it's not like there's a long list of people that are coming in doing what David's doing, and what David's doing, I think, is really important to the revitalization of Oklahoma City. We've got, obviously, these areas that David isn't around in, they're doing pretty well. But, there are some specific areas, and, you know, some of the projects we talked about, these two projects and the Main Street Arcade are just a couple that, those have been vacant for decades and decades, and it's, it's a risky prospect to come in, and people are not lining up to come in and take over these projects. This is a real niche market, and I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much. We enjoy putting these buildings back into use, and it is risky, and it is, you know, I lose sleep at night sometimes.
So, were you going to share the Ron Norick story?
I'm sorry?
Were you going to share the Ron Norick story?
I wasn't, but I will. Mr. Norick, Mayor Norick, shared a little bit of colorful story to the Townhouse at the TIFF Review Committee, thank you. And he said, "As a young man, the building Catty Corner, which is now the Bob Moore Collision Center, was a Norick printing facility." And he worked there as a child, and they would sit outside on their lunch, and there would be some ladies that would wave to them from the other side from the Townhouse. So, he could indeed say that there were some interesting people who lived over there over the course of time, so.
All right, David, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Meg, you wanted to talk about item K?
I did, very briefly. These are, this is a contract to repair a lot of the fences and replace some fencing that was damaged in the May 15 storms. And this is Ward four, six, and seven. And I know that citizens are going to be so pleased, particularly on South Young Speed and South Broadway, to get those fences repaired all around the creeks.
Mm-hmm. And Larry, you wanted to speak about item W?
Yeah, I just want to ask you a question, Mayor, from either you or Jim. Several years ago, we, we went through a, a study of sorts dealing with motorsports. We also had motorsports going on at the fairgrounds. It had a very passionate crowd there. And so just to kind of clear the air on what are the expectations? What can the public expect?
I, I think they should, the expectations should be low. They have come to us. This is a promoter who has done Grand Prix races in other parts of the country, looks at Oklahoma City from the outside, thinks it might be a good market. So they've come to us and asked for an opportunity to kind of look at the city and see if they can find a, a course and a business model that works for them. In the meantime, they just want some assurance that they don't go through all this work and then we sign a deal with somebody else. And since we weren't negotiating with anybody else or having conversations with anybody else, it's, it's pretty simple to welcome into our city and, and have them look around. So I, I don't, I don't know what the level of expectation should be, but, but this is completely different than the one we did, was it, five or six years ago, when we were actually, or I was actually trying to put that deal together? And it failed. And so this is an opportunity that's come to us from the outside, from an experienced promoter.
Thank you, sir.
One thing I'd add to that, if you, if you Google the promoter and add the word Boston, you can look at the event promoting in Boston, similar to this proposal.
Mayor, I have a question about M. It, it has to do with how far north that project will go on item M, on, on Anderson Road. You don't have to do it, but we don't have to have somebody come talk to me now, but if you'll just get back to me. I've had some questions for people who live north of 44th Street wanting to know whether it's coming there or not, and I flat can't remember, so.
We will get with you, sir.
Okay.
All right. Ready to vote the consent docket? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We're on to the concurrence docket. All right, any individual considerations warranted here? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We're on to item nine. These are items that require a separate vote. The first comes to us from the Traffic Commission. It would reserve a parking zone in Ward two near Northwest 25th Street. Ed, you okay with this?
Yes, move approval.
All right, we're voting on item nine A1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine A2 is another parking zone issue, and this one's in Ward four on Southwest 25th Street. Pete?
I don't have a problem with it. I move approval.
Okay. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine A3 would establish a new parking space for the physically disabled on Northeast Fourth Street in Ward seven. John?
Move approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine B has to do with, I guess, Maps for Kids. And David Todd's going to make a presentation for us?
I think so.
Okay.
I hope so.
Morning, David.
Hi. Sorry about that. Today, we've got a PIP revision. And remember that the, the PIP with the Maps for Kids is a, is a living document. It not only keeps track of, of what we are going to do, but it keeps track of what we have done. So it establishes scope, budget, priority of the, of the projects. You can see the, the different projects that we've had in there, technology, transportation, and suburban schools. It was originally approved in October 2002, and it's been amended 13 times because of those reasons I just described. Today's recommendations is to adjust and close the administration building project, add additional funds to the FD Moon project, add roadway and parking at Capitol Hill High School, and close and adjust 53 previous approved projects. So the new additions and deletions, we have to close out and adjust the administration building project actual spent. If you remember, we spent about $2.3 million purchasing the, the building that the administration will use for the new administration building. But now, as they move into the, the remodel phase, they have significantly more money in the project than we do. And they've asked that, that we give administrative duties to them for the remodel. And we take that 1.5 that we had left and, and apply it to other projects. And that other project, I'll skip down to the third one, is the roadway and parking lot project at Capitol Hill High School. So the roadway, I'll, I'll come back to FD Moon, I haven't skipped it. But the, the roadway and parking lot project is the street, that is a private street that goes around Capitol Hill. It lines up with Chertel on the west, and then it comes around south behind the, the gymnasium that's, that's there, and, and it feeds all the, all the parking. It's in bad shape, and as I said, it is a, a private roadway, so we will take that on as a new project. And then the additional funds for FD Moon, that was some money as we clean up projects and, and we take the excess, or the, the leftover funds here and there out of the projects, and that trickles down, and, and we get a new amount that's left over. We've got a million dollars that we want to add to FD Moon. So it pushes the new budget up to $2,828,000.
Now, for, for Moon, David, not to interrupt you, but for Moon, i- is it just fixing the first floor or the first and second floor?
That's going to be an interesting question, because we have talked about that within the office. Whenever we go into design, the Fire Marshal will look at the entire building and make sure that we have life safety issues, and then there'll be ADA access issues. So as far as those two items, it will be the entire building. The purpose of the project originally was to do the FD Moon lower level stuff, and, and the front entry is an item that we've looked at, the door and, and the way that works, the office versus where the nurse station is, flipping that and redoing the office. Then we've looked at the cafeteria and, and some of those things. And the district has done some work out there. They've done some work in the hallways and, and done some paint and done some bathrooms. But what we have now is an architect onboard that will start developing that scope so that we could see what we can, can do out there. And he'll be in touch with the Fire Marshal and see what issues have to be dealt with. Okay, thank you.
David, I have one, a question. Has the, the Board of Education agreed to all these, the changes at Capitol Hill and at Moon and all those we're talking about?
Yes. Thank you. And then you can see the, the other things that have been previously done on closeouts and adjustments. This is the individual sheet that we have for each school. This is the one for Capitol Hill High School, and this specifically lines out what we have in store. I just described the, the roadway construction, and then there's some more parking lot construction that needs to be done up there. They've got the parking lot that's south of the school, furthest west, has deteriorated So that's, that's all I have. Can you answer any other questions?
Questions for David?
Yeah, I have a question. Excuse me. David, historically, do we, and this kind of goes back to the question, I'm not quite sure what is being done with respect to the funds going to the administration building. In the past, do we just reimburse as expenditures are made, or how does that accomplish?
No, actually, the contracts, there's, there's two different programs, quite frankly. It's the bond program and the sales tax program. The sales tax program is our actual contracts, and the, in the Oklahoma City Public School Trust, MAPS Trust, is the actual contractor, the contracting entity on those. The other projects, the bond projects, those are school bonds, and they have to have, be contracts with the school district. So we administer those, and the school trust sees them first and then makes recommendations to the school district onto those projects.
Oh, so the funds that we're talking about for the administration building is coming from the bond fund?
No, actually, they, they were sales tax dollars, but what we're doing is, 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 is we're going to, they, they, they're putting a bunch of, of their own money into it. And so they've asked that we, we take that money and, and use it for other projects, and they're going to complete the administration building.
Yeah, okay. Well, so, we get a report from them as far as, once they're complete, we'll see where the funds were used? Or do we do that?
We won't have our, any sales tax funds in it anymore. It'll be all their money. It'll be their project.
Okay, I'm confused. Can we start at the beginning? What are you asking for?
Well, this is a, a whole program implementation. This is a PIP, Project Implementation Plan modification. One of the things we're doing is, we began with some sales tax dollars that was going to the admin building. They're asking that those dollars be reallocated, and then that project be freed up, and they will complete that project with school district funds. Yeah, essentially, considering the, the Maps for Kids part of the administration building complete, because we purchased it, we're done.
Okay, I see. Well, one other question, kind of in general. When will we have completed all of the Maps for Kids projects? When do you see this program?
We have, we have, Emerson is ongoing, and it'll be done towards middle of the year. But we picked up a couple of other projects. One of them is, is Moon, because we had excess funds, and the other one is Chavez, with the gym and the classrooms. And it's going to be another year or so before those wrap up. And then the John Rex Elementary School Playground is ongoing, and that's the only projects we have going with Maps for Kids. Now, there are some bond projects going, continuing, and we're doing gyms and, and additional classrooms for their last bond issue project, their '07 bond issue project. And we continue to administer those, which is with their bond money.
Correct, but that's not city money, that's?
That's correct.
That's school?
Yeah, no, there's, we're down to the very end of, of Maps for Kids monies that are left.
So about a year from now, we'll, we will have completed all those projects?
Year to year and a half, I'd, I'd say. Yeah. By the time we get these new projects out, but we're, it's, it's just a couple of, of small projects at this point. Yeah, it extends on, but it's good news, because we had more money.
That money just keeps rolling in, it sounds like.
Yeah, it's, it's finite, trust me.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I, I just have one comment. Looking at the project at Capitol Hill, as a, you know, I grew up out there, I didn't, I fortunately didn't have to go to school there, but, but I, but I've always, we, we played football there, and it was, it was just a big part of South Oklahoma. So we all thought we lived in Capitol Hill, whether we went to Capitol Hill High School or not. But watching what happened over the last, say, 10 years to that facility, the partnership between the, the Capitol Hill Alumni Association doing all the work on the Boulevard, Maps, Maps for Kids, the board, the city's work, Fields and Futures work there, it is going to turn out to be a really nice, really nice complex. It's a, you know, there's a new one, like the one at Douglas is a little newer, but it, it, Capitol Hill, by, by doing it on a school that was already there, you have that presence of that building, which you're not going to get with a brand-new building. It's just never going to be there. And it's, it's just amazing. You go back behind the school and see what's, and look at the stadium, what happened to the stadium, look at the soccer facilities. I mean, it is beyond anything I ever imagined that could have happened in my lifetime, because it's always been the center of South Oklahoma City, regardless of, some people were unfortunate, even more unfortunate than I was. I went to Grant, a couple of guys did here, so. But Capitol Hill's just always been that focal center point of South Oklahoma City, and, and to see it come back and be revived the way it is, it's really heartwarming for me. It's just, with the new Wellness Center going in on the south boundary of it, it's really going to be something to be proud of in another couple of years. It already is, frankly, but.
It's amazing.
It's really nice.
David, thank you.
Thanks.
Larry?
Just a, a point to, to clarify, Mayor. Jim, if you would, we're talking about this quote, "extra money" unquote, and yet the school board is wrestling, and the administration is wrestling with cash shortages right now for academics and operations. This money from Maps for Kids and the bond money all has to be spent on infrastructure. Is that true?
Ask the Capitol's bench.
And so it cannot be allocated for, for these other uses, even though somebody might like to. We're just prohibited from doing that.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any other comments or questions on the, the approving the Maps for Kids amended program implementation plan? All right, is there a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine C comes to us from the Emergency Operations Manager. Jim, you want to talk about this? I know Frank's.
Frank's here, this is, yeah, this, this is really the annual update of the Emergency Operations Plan. It's, it's not substantial, pretty routine. Frank's going to fill in some gaps.
Good morning. Yes, this is our annual update, and a lot of it was just routine housekeeping. One of the things we did was we updated the hazard analysis summary to match that of the national summary that's used, so that we had our hazards in the correct category. We moved the human pandemic influenza over to natural hazards, previously had been under man-made, and we changed West Nile virus up to mosquito-borne diseases to cover the whole range of potential mosquito-borne diseases that we might have to deal with. We updated the communications section with some wording changes recommended by 911 Communications. The Appendix A, which is the city at a glance, provides an overview of the city, was updated by the Planning Department to match the Chamber of Commerce's document, which is what we've always used. And then we moved the Emergency Support Function 14, which is Long-Term Recovery and Reconstruction. It is now re-designated as the Pre-Disaster Recovery Plan and is now an annex to the Basic Plan, and ESF14 is now blank, and that is consistent with what the federal government has done with the National Response Frameworks.
Frank, is, is the state doing anything on the, on mosquito repellent?
Not that we're aware of. We're working with Oklahoma City County Health Department on our mosquito mitigation measures, which includes identifying areas in the community that have standing water and trying to remediate those, using Larvicide to kill the, the larva before the mosquitoes are hatched, public education and information, and as far as, but there's no plans to do any area-wide spraying, and of course, citizens are encouraged to, to use mosquito and insect repellent when they're outdoors.
Right. You know, it, it just seems like we ought to be prepared if, you know, if we start to get cases that show up, that we need to be prepared for this. I don't know that we have to do anything now, but, and it, it seems to me like, you know, the, the state ought to be considering it. Well, you know, whether or not they act to do something is, is their call, but they ought to be considering it, as we kind of look at these national maps and see where the cases are going to start to show up.
We've already had internally within the, the city, we've already had one meeting about a month ago, and met with City County Health Department, as long with appropriate city departments, to talk about this year's strategy for mosquito mitigation and abatement, and talk about the emerging hazard that may be posed by the Zika virus. So we've already had a discussion about how we were going to approach things this year.
Okay. Just a quick question. Frank, if somebody has a concern as to a particular area within the city that they think may be holding water, that could possibly create some situations for mosquitoes, what's the phone number, or who should they contact?
Just call the Action Center and report it to the Action Center, and they'll, they'll refer to the appropriate city department. It's kind of a joint effort. Of course, Development Services Code Enforcement plays a part to it. The Utilities Department's Solid Waste Management has a, a piece of it as well, and also Public Works Stormwater Quality is, is working on it. And Stormwater Quality is kind of serving as our lead within the city, and they're involved with the trapping of the mosquitoes and identifying what areas they're finding mosquitoes and those that are infected with one of the viruses.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do, do we put any Larvicide in, in our water? I think.
Stormwater, our Stormwater Quality folks do, do work with folks on, on Larvicides and standing water.
Yeah, the, the tablets, the Larvicide tablets are, are available, and we have city staff, as well as Oklahoma City County Health Department staff, that will place Larvicide in any standing pot, standing water.
Okay, is that similar to, like, City of Admin, what they're, they do? Do you know, or?
I don't know. If they're using Larvicide, it's, it's pretty much all the same. It's a, basically, it looks like a tablet. The best way to, it's described as it kind of looks like a urinal cake, and that's put in the stagnant or standing water to kill off any larva. It's not harmful to any other animals.
So is there a plan, are, are there, I saw a report yesterday ranking us in the top 25 cities at risk for a Zika virus outbreak. I don't know how they come up with those factors or variables, but is there a plan being developed with City County Health Department, or?
Well, City County Health Department, and we partner with them, and, and they, they take the lead overall with regards to the mosquito-borne diseases. And I would have to defer to them, or if you have a specific question, I would have to go ask them and get back to you with it. But they, they do take the lead on coordinating and providing a comprehensive strategy, and the city works with them, and we, we support what they do. And then we have leveraging the city departments and the various programs we have, we leverage those to enhance what they, you know, what they're doing, as well as to move in unison with them with trying to mitigate the potential mosquito habitats that are out there.
So one, one specific question I would have that's being debated in cities in Florida that are even higher risk than us is whether the citizens of those cities would be okay with releasing genetically modified mosquitoes that then mate with other mosquitoes and they die before they, it wipes out, since it's one species that carries this virus, it wipes out the population of that specific mosquito in high-risk areas. Is that on the radar, or are those?
We haven't, we haven't had any in-depth discussions about that yet. And the one thing about the Zika virus is that it's, the information is evolving almost[1791.83] And it keeps, you know, it changes the strategies and the approaches.
Would it be possible? I'm sorry.
I can, I can ask City County Health Department if that is one of the things they're thinking about or they're exploring.
Yeah, would it be possible for you to come back next week after you ask those questions and give us a presentation?
I can do that. I would probably, would like to bring City County Health Department with me as well. I would, I would like it to be a joint presentation because we, they do take the lead on, on all diseases and specifically mosquito-borne.
I'd appreciate that as well.
We can do that next week maybe a little quick, but we'll bring it back in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Frank.
Yeah.
All right, we need a motion on item 9C. And this is adopting the changes to the Emergency Operation Plan. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9D, understand we do not need executive session on this item. It meets the policies in place. Is there a motion?
That's correct.
Cast your votes. 9D passes unanimously. Item 9E, understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Okay, is there a motion on 9E? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. And we have Councilman White's introduction, I guess, a week or two ago. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? It is a public hearing on item 10A. All right, how about a motion then just to move this forward? Okay, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Continuing items from council. Mark, you have anything for us?
Yeah, just briefly, next Tuesday night, I will be at the Greens Homeowners Association to talk about resurfacing some of their streets. The bid has gone out and we're awaiting the contract award and we're all very excited about that. And I look forward to seeing the members of the homeowners association.
John? David? All right, I saw you on the cover of The Contractors Magazine this month. Congratulations. Meant to bring my copy to get an autograph.
I don't know if I have.
Yeah. I read the interview inside. I also wanted to bring attention to Al Snipes' 95th birthday was yesterday. And those of you who don't know Al, he's kind of been a leading civic activist in the community for, gosh, 70 years or so by now. But an amazing life and, you know, he's still active. He's still, he's still out there and going. Happy birthday to Al Snipes. Pete? All right, Larry?
Just like to make note of a couple of things that are happening in Ward 3. This being April, Oklahoma City Beautiful, of course, has the citywide litter booths going on. And this past Saturday, the folks from Musgrave-Pennington, under Ryan Lurch's leadership, had some folks from a high school and also from OU come in and work on cleaning up one of the entryways to Musgrave-Pennington. Really appreciate that. And then this Saturday, the West 10 group is sponsoring a litter booth on Northwest 10th Street, also a public event to bring the neighbors out to the Lions Club for some fun between 10:00 and 12:00. There'll be free hot dogs and other activities for them. And that's a very active group, really trying to turn around the West 10 area. And then the Windsor area Business Group has a director's meeting tonight. They've got some exciting plans also on the burner. So things are happening and the neighborhoods are getting activated. Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh-huh. Ed? All right, James? All right, city manager reports?
Nothing today, sir.
All right, citizens to be heard. Joe Sarge Nelson. Yeah, I don't think you have to use that one. I think your, the regular mic there should work.
Okay, I'm Joe Sarge Nelson. And the reason I'm here today, I'm sure most of y'all already know. I filed a document this morning in reference to the item I've been talking about for quite a while with the City Hall. And that's one of the reasons the councilman is sitting behind me, make sure I don't trip over my own feet. And I've visited with several lawyers in confection with what I did. And like I've said a long time ago, that, and I'm a firm believer of this, that when somebody plays around the till sooner or later, they're going to trip over their feet. And one did. And I looked at this thing and I took that long and hard before I did file my action. And it is downstairs and the addendum is with it. And I just want some action taken on it. A lot of things that goes on with this council, y'all work hard, you do things. I don't mind complimenting you when you do the right thing, but when you're wrong, I told you before, I'm going to be right there with my foot across your neck, it's just the bottom line. But I'm going to do it this way, strictly in paper, nothing physical, no threats, just handle it accordingly. I tried this through Mr. McAteer, my councilman, and I went through the city attorney's office, visited with him. I went through the timeline report and I met with five different lawyers. And I'm based on what I had, the evidence that I had, which is 33 pieces, was pretty solid. I don't, and I've told you all this before, I never make statements or accuse or anything that I cannot enforce or back up. I don't just throw words out in the air that I can't support. And I have got it supported. So I'm going to follow the rule like I promised. I'll go through you all first, see how it turns out. I'm prepared to go the other way. It's already documented, typed up, ready to go. A 35-page brief with all my exhibits and all the evidence that goes with it. And to set the record straight for everybody's benefit so it doesn't make any difference one way or the other, regardless of how you sell something or buy something, and it's on record, you are still the main principal character in the whole thing, as conflict of interest, if you represent a certain entity. In this case, that's the case. They don't care you go through a whole bunch of people, but still the same thing. But I was going to talk about all this other stuff, but I think just getting to the point, getting it over with is fine. I mean nothing personal. I like to person in person, but business is business and the taxpayers' business is my business. Thank you all.
And that's going to do it for today. We're adjourned.